All right, it's 7:01. I'd like to call this meeting of the Carver School Committee to order September 24th. Please rise to join me with pledge.
One second.
So, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law. Thank you, everybody. Okay, we'll go to our first item, comments on the EAPC.
Tom Pinto has raised his hand, so give me a second to make time panelists for a second. I just want to let everybody know, we're actually trying a new feature in Zoom this evening. It's called a webinar. So, in the webinar setting, people are not able to turn on their videos. When we go to comments from the general public, if you're interested in making a comment, you should just put your name into the question and answer section, and Meredith Erickson will follow and call on people in order. We have to invite you to unmute in this format of Zoom. So, bear with us if we might be a little slower tonight. I've used this for some private meetings, but haven't done it in a public meeting yet. So, bear with us as we transition to using the webinar format of Zoom. So with that, I am going to try to make Tom Pinto, I'll give him permission to speak. Hi, Tom, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, Tom.
All right, all right, we're working through it. Good evening, everyone. Next week is the first week of the start of the hybrid model. I want to again thank my members, the district school committee, for all the immense amount of work and hours put in throughout the whole pandemic. Let's hope for a healthy, safe start for all as we and our students enter the building for the first time in a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. We will now move to comments from the general public. Scott, do you have a procedure you'd like to announce to the Zoom audience?
Yeah, so I'm going to share my screen in a second. And in the webinar format, there's a question and answer section. So if you put your name into the question and answer, Meredith Erickson will recognize you. And then we will call on people for comments from the general public, and I'm displaying on the screen how to do that as well.
Scott, James is also in the...
Okay, and I will promote James to a panelist. All right, we do not see anything in question and answer. I mean, we can give it one more minute if you want, but as of right now, no one has chimed in for comments from the general public.
Okay, give it another minute. Is James on with us?
James is on, but I need, I can make him a panelist in a second. When we transition out of comments from the general public, I'll make him a panelist.
Meredith, anything?
Nope.
Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to approval of minutes for August 5th.
If you could just give me a second. I know we're a little slow in transitions here. Let me promote James to being a panelist.
I'll state that over when you're ready.
Okay, I have promoted James to be a panelist.
Hello, James. Okay, we'll move on to item three, approval of minutes for August 5th, 2020, open session, and September 21st, 2020, joint meeting of the school committee and select board. Do you have a motion for approval?
Move to approve minutes for August 5th, 2020, open session.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for August 5th. Any questions, corrections, comments?
No, that was a heavy meeting. They were very thorough, so nice work to you.
Okay, seeing none. This is a roll call vote. We'll start on the right hand, we'll start to my right. Stephanie?
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Jennifer Pratt, aye.
Jason Greenwood, aye.
And we have...
James O'Brien, aye.
Thank you. Andy Cattarelli, aye. So that's approved unanimously. And we go, we move on to September 21st, joint meeting of the school committee and select board.
Move to accept, to approve the minutes of the September 21st, 2020, joint meeting of the school committee and select board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any concerns, questions, corrections? No? Okay, seeing none. Sam?
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Jennifer Pratt, aye.
Jason Greenwood, aye.
James O'Brien, aye.
And Andy Cattarelli, aye. I want to thank Gina for her hard work in taking all that down and all the meetings we have. Thank you, Gina. Okay, so we go to item four, reports from the superintendent.
Okay, first starting with some personnel updates. We've had some new hires. Crystal Ordónez as a CDL bus driver. Michelle Costa as an ESP for special education at the elementary school. Jamie Wild as an ESP special education at the middle high school. Derek Howard as a custodian, third shift at the middle high school. Michael Schut as a custodian, third shift at the elementary school. John Gagnon is a long-term substitute custodian, second shift at the elementary school. Philip Nickerson, custodian, first and second split shift at the middle high school. David Kenke as a custodian, first and second split shift at the elementary school. I'm going to stop there for a second, just because I think we've talked about this a little bit, and it makes sense to touch on it here. And I don't know if Brad wants to add any pieces on this, he can. So right now, we are fully staffed in our custodial staff, and we've added two additional custodians. So, over the past several months, we've actually had several retirements, we had a couple resignations. So we had several openings in our custodial staff. And then as a committee, we approved hiring two new custodians for this year to help in COVID response. So there would be six custodians at the elementary school, six custodians at the middle high school. And at this time, we are fully staffed in all of those positions. And one of the custodians at each building is going to kind of be a split shift, helping during the day in terms of generalized cleaning of common touch areas, sanitation, you know, they're essentially going to be moving around the building, cleaning door handles, water bubblers, bathrooms, just doing regular continuous cleaning throughout the day, and then also helping second shift. Brad, I don't know if there's any pieces you want to add on to that at this time, but we're fully, fully, all those positions are full.
Yep, they are full. The only thing I want to add on, at some point, we'll have to touch base on long-term funding for the COVID positions. I don't see the COVID regulations getting dropped at any point this year. So funding through CARES is only eligible right now, currently through December 30th. So after that point, we have to pick up these extra COVID positions in our operating budget, and we'll have to discuss a funding source for that later.
Just going on with new hires, Roberta Grant as a bus monitor. Timothy Blas as an ESP pre-K at the elementary school. Megan McKay as an ESP at the elementary school. Kevin Thompson is an ESP in the book collection, aid, and also as a lunch model, kind of a dual position at the elementary school. And we did have two resignations. Sarah Pace is an ESP at the elementary school, and Lynn Williams as a bus driver. So that is our personnel update. And staff-wise, we're in a good position to begin with in-person instruction on Monday, the 28th.
Very good.
So, we'll just go right into...
Yeah, go right into item B, COVID-19 updates.
COVID-19 updates. And this is just taking a look at the weekly metrics report. It was updated on Wednesday afternoons. So I'm displaying the report here. And Carver has returned to gray on the report. So, our total case count since the beginning is 78 cases. Right now, there's less than five active cases in Carver. The average daily incident rate per 100,000 is 2.3, which is lower than it was last week. In total, 3,004 in 10 people have been tested who are residents of Carver. There were 440 tests in the last two weeks. Of those 440 tests, there were five positives for a percentage positivity of 1.14%, which was also lower. So, over the past week, since last week's report, some of our data has trended down within the Carver community. And then the other thing which you asked me to put together is kind of a more of a more, and I know, I think James, not to pick on, not to pick on James in particularly, but Mr. O'Brien has said, you know, looking at the map is sometimes a good perspective of the larger community. You know, so there's a lot of information in this report, but this, who passed the map? Here's the map. So the map also gives you a sense and a feeling for how, what's happening, what are the trends with the virus within our local area. Within our local area, the trends right now have been positive as well for Plineth County and for areas of neighboring Bristol County in terms of some communities that were yellow have gone green. We were obviously yellow and have gone gray. There has been a couple additions of some yellows closer up towards, as you move up Route 3 towards Boston, that were not there last week. But, you know, sometimes the map gives us a good global perspective of what's happening regionally with the virus as well. So, the other document you asked me to put together, to take a look at, is kind of just a review of our weekly metrics. So we've been tracking this since August 26th. And so you get to see, you know, what our, what the trend has been specifically for Carver. Obviously, we were gray for a couple weeks. We became yellow for a couple weeks because we had trended up. And now since in the past week, we've trended down. You know, our rate of positivity trended up, but now it's sliding back down. And then our total positive tests in the 14-day span have been, you know, 3, 4, 7, 9, 5. And in the background, I'm not going to go through every community, but what, for this document for the school committee, is we start looking at trends with the virus, and as we start looking at making decisions based on trends of the virus, we have also done, you know, Carver's neighbors, to look at what's happening within Kingston, Middleborough, Plinton, Plineth. And like I said, I'm not going to go through each of this, each of these pieces of data individually, but the school committee has this to make that comparison. Rochester and Wareham, in terms of the trends in this area. And again, if you look at the trends of each of these communities, actually been fairly positive overall and has trended down in the past week. Just as a reminder, you know, the Department of Education has said that we shouldn't necessarily be looking to make decisions based on one week's trend of data. We should look at the trends over time and make decisions based on what the long-term trends are. And, you know, if we're tracking this every week, you know, we're going to have a good sense of five, six, seven, eight, 10 weeks as we get into the year. Jen?
Yes, I had a question come to me, and I wasn't certain in the answer, so I'm hoping you might be able to clarify. So on this map, I know that gray and green is recommended full reopen, yellow is a recommended hybrid, and if a town is red, it's recommended they be full remote. But is it also required, or is it just a recommendation? Like, is there any requirement to this report?
It is not, there are no requirements to this report. This report is supposed to be guidance to be used by school committees and area communities. And, I mean, I will say, red, red makes a clear recommendation that you would be remote. Yellow gives the remote or hybrid. And gray or green gives the recommendation of hybrid or full in person. But ultimately, these are decisions that are up to the local school committee to make and make determination. The only thing, and this is an interesting one in terms of, is for athletics, they're saying that if you are a red community, you should not be participating in athletics. So that would be something we'd, you know, if we became red, we'd have to look at and discuss as a committee, we'd have to go back to that decision. And obviously, if we became a red community, we'd go back to that decision overall. All of our decisions, we've been looking at everything.
James, did you have something you wanted to add?
If you don't mind. I'm not sure if I'm speaking for the 85 other participants watching online, but I didn't hear Brad or Jen last time through at all. I hear Scott very fine. Scott's voice is clear and loud, but I didn't even catch Jen from last station, so...
Okay. We'll work on speaking into the mic, and maybe we'll try, maybe we'll try unmuting ourselves and see if we don't get a lot of feedback. Do we want to do a quick test, James? Jen, you want to unmute and speak and see what happens?
Yes. Testing, testing.
Yeah, you're going to get the feedback of that.
Testing, testing.
That was better. I heard you.
Were you muted then, on Zoom?
I was muted. I just went very close to the microphone.
We're all going to have to do that, get really close to the mic. Put it right near you.
Yes, Randy, as you are speaking right now, you're going to have to really get on to the, get on to the mic.
Hello, hello, hello.
You really are, if you want to make it valuable for the people that are watching, I can't hear you guys clearly, if you know.
All right.
And so we're on the side, getting right on to the mic.
All right, thank you, James.
Thanks, James. Good to have that perspective. So, you know, the next piece of this is, you know, starting to have that discussion, which people, I know the community's been talking to us and asking about transitioning and coming up with a plan for transition of how we would transition for models. Ultimately, we made a decision as a school committee to start remotely, and we've implemented the remote start. We are going to transition to the in-person hybrid model on Monday. And then I think at our next meeting, we'll have to come back with some recommendations on what our next steps in terms of transitioning will be. And I'm going to talk, and we'll be looking at this metric data, also looking at, you know, what's happening on the ground in terms of the virus in, within the Carver community as we return in a hybrid model. You know, clearly, that's something we're going to have to look at. And if, you know, we return in a hybrid model, and we see that there's not an increase, then we can, the committee can take into consideration of looking to slowly bring students back in a full in-person model. And I think as we get into some of our later conversations, I think that will also inform kind of some of the thoughts around maybe looking to consider some sort of an in-person return. So, yeah, so I know that that's something the community's been asking for. I know it's something the chair of the committee's been asking, has asked me for in terms of looking at establishing some metrics and some, and I don't know if timelines, but at least a plan for looking at returning students full in person. And we'll have more on that for our next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is it okay if I transition into the opening of school?
That's fine.
So, we opened school in a remote model on Wednesday, September 16th. Now, I want to highlight some of the key takeaways from our first eight days in remote. And I just wanted to make a general opening statement of, and I'm stealing from, I've heard many people say this, but I know Mr. Schultz, this has been a focus for him as the principal of the middle high school, is talking about the concept of, you know, as a school community across Southeast of Mass, across Massachusetts, across the country really, all educators have really been asked to redesign education and create education in a remote model, in a hybrid model, and then, you know, and have even a full in-person model be a little bit different. And we wanted the remote model to be different than it was in the spring, for it to be more rigorous, more challenging, more formalized, having a formalized schedule. And, you know, so we, and we did that for eight days. And obviously, there's some thoughts and reflections on how those eight days went throughout the community, and it's something that we're going to evaluate as we move forward. And we just want to think, you know, ultimately, we're asking all of us, we, you always kind of design in theory, and then there's the intersection of theory and practice. And not that we wanted to have it this way, but within our first two weeks, our first eight days, we have the, we're going to have the opportunity to look at theory versus practice for the remote model. We're going to have the opportunity to look at theory versus practice in the hybrid model. And we want to be reflective of that. So, yeah, we made reopening plans, we communicated those to people, but we're also going to be reflective on how these experiences go and say, yeah, you need to be a little patient with this because there's going to have to be adjustments, there's going to have to be tweaks, there's going to have to be changes. And I just want to acknowledge that upfront. I will say, one thing that I heard consistently over the past eight days is that teachers and administrators have worked really hard to effectively implement the remote model. I've received a lot of positive feedback on everyone's professionalism and effort, even from people who were expressing concerns about the model itself. So, as I heard from parents, as I heard from staff members about how the remote model went, everyone at some point made some sort of comment of, you know, I'm concerned. So I'll give an example of a concern. You know, there's definitely been a concern, especially at the younger age levels, kindergarten, first, second grade, that the remote model was very intense, a lot of screen time for students. Students and families were struggling with that amount of screen time. Teachers were struggling from the concept of seeing their kids struggle, you know, watching their kids struggle with that amount of screen time. But, almost, I can almost say, I think, I don't want to say 100% because I don't know if I, I don't want to miss something. I don't want someone to say, well, I sent you an email and I did give something positive. But the majority of people who emailed or called, even though they were expressing their concern about the amount of face time for some of our younger kids in a full remote model, they all praised the teacher and said, look, the teacher's working real hard at it. I've been impressed. Teacher's doing a great job. It's just hard. It's just tough. You know, developmentally, are the kids ready at the age of six or seven for that much screen time? And I think that's a legitimate question, a concern that's come out of our, out of our first eight days. You know, other things, you know, on the first day, some people had some difficulties accessing links to classes, but teachers and administrators effectively assisted people in getting that. Some of that came from our transition from Aspen, and I talked about this a little bit, I think at the last meeting, that our intention was to implement the Aspen system over the summer and not the first week of school. But since we decided to change the schedule at the middle high school and go to a block schedule, we decided to schedule what our old system, IPASS. That was actually the recommendation of the Aspen team. They were even saying, no, if you're going to reschedule in August, you should use your old system to do that. Because like anytime you use something that's totally new, you're going to hit bumps in the road. And based on what you have to do with your schedule, it doesn't, we don't want you to be hitting those bumps in the road. We want you to schedule on your old system, and we'll convert over to the new system when school starts. But then, that made us hit some bumps in the road with the new system as school started. So we just want to acknowledge that. You know, there were some technology concerns in terms of people hearing videos or lagging in Chromebooks. We've worked to address some of those individual concerns with some individual families, which could be based on their internet connection. I know that we actually put out some information to some of our teachers in terms of ways in which they could assist people in terms of troubleshooting some of those issues that they might be with either sound, or either, or with the lagging of videos. So we've been addressing those concerns. And then, you know, for all the things that have been concerns, I've heard a lot, a lot of positive things. I was, I was speaking to some people today, and they said, you know what, it went, these eight days, from my, from their perspective, went really well. And they said, we're really happy with how things have gone. So I've heard a wide range of responses to how these first eight days have gone remotely. And I'm going to touch on this later on when we get into my goals as the superintendent, but I'll give you a little foreshadowing. Foreshadow one of my goals is going to be about the concept of, I think we do need to establish teams of teachers, of administrators, of parents, to evaluate each of these models as we implemented them. And, and basically make recommendations. Because we don't know how long we're going to be in this, you know, Brad referenced at the beginning of the meeting, we don't know how long we're going to need these COVID positions. You know, I hate, I hate to think about it. I don't want to be a downer, but I also want to be a realist. You know, maybe next summer, we're sitting here again and saying, what kind of model are we going to implement? I hope that's not where we are, but we don't know. And, but, we're going to have, next summer, we're going to have years worth of experience, that we should be taking that years' worth of experience and refining the model and making it better, and being committed to making it better, and being committed to making it the best we can for our students, for our teachers, for the community of Carver. So one of my, so we're going to look at these first eight days, and we're going to analyze them, and we're going to say, and maybe we make some recommendations that if we have to go full remote again, it might look a little different. So yes, we've published an official plan, but now we got the chance to try it. And so now we're going to say, okay, yeah, we tried it. This is what worked really well. This is the pieces we want to keep. These are the pieces we need to, we may need to adjust and change, which revise the plan a little bit so that, you know, hopefully it doesn't happen this way, but we end up in, in February going full remote again, that we're, it might look a little bit different based on learning from the experiences we've had over these first eight days. And then I get, my only last piece on this is, you know, we are ready to transition to the hybrid model on Monday. You know, we've completed our, we finalized all of our preparations for students to return. Bus routes have been finalized and put out to parents. The HVAC system, we've completed those inspections of the classrooms at the middle high school. Our facilities are prepared. I don't know if you noticed some small things, like we have tents, we have tents in place. So there's a tent out in front of the elementary school, a tent out in front of the middle high school. Brad, I'll put Brad on this, but I think we're adding two more tents at the elementary?
Correct, two more at the elementary and one more at the middle high.
One more at the middle high school. So those, so give some opportunities and places to go for outside classes. So we're, we're ready to go for Monday. I think that there's a lot of people who are excited to see students in person on Monday, and I'm excited to make that transition and start hybrid learning on Monday. So that's kind of my last piece for this.
Thank you very much, Scott. That was a very informative overview, and I really appreciate you putting it all together for us. Does anybody have any questions or concerns for Scott on that last presentation, or anything he shared before that?
Stephanie Clarity, I just want to say thank you.
Stephanie, nice and...
Stephanie Clarity, I just wanted to say thank you to Scott and to all the administrative team and the teachers and everyone for all the work they've put in thus far. And I super appreciate the fact that you are going to be reviewing things as we go through this. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Anybody else? No? Okay, moving on. We are going into item D, drop off and pickup procedures.
Yeah, we want to talk a little about the drop off and pick off procedures at both buildings, because it's going to look a little different in both buildings. And we realized there's going to be a lot more people driving to school. So we want to talk about what that's going to look like. You know, some members of the community expressed concerns about that. So Ruby's going to give an overview of what's going to happen at the elementary school, and Mike Schultz will give an overview of what's going to happen at the middle high school. Ruby, if you'd give me a second, I just have to elevate you to being a panelist. So Ruby, you should be able to unmute yourself, and I will pull up your presentation. We'll see.
Okay, good. Can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, Ruby.
All right. Hello, everyone. Good evening.
Good evening.
So I wanted to go over a few important pieces of the, we'll start with the drop off at the elementary. And I first really wanted to say thank you to everyone, all of our parents, everyone who really had to make a lot of adjustments. We did ask for parents to drop off if they could, so that we could have, you know, some room on the buses. So given those adjustments and the numbers that we have, we've made some slight modifications. So I wanted you all to take a look at this slide first. And I'm going to go ahead and explain it, but we've made the modification of having our parents, when you drive in, and you see that red line, that's, that's the parents coming in in your vehicle. We're going to have you take a right. We will have staff positioned outside in the morning beginning at 8 o'clock to help to direct, direct parent traffic, as well as staff. Most of our staff should have arrived from school and parked by 8 o'clock, but we still do have several staff members that have later shifts coming in. So we will have our SRO Al Silva helping us as well. And we also have, the chief will be having someone else out on Route 58 to help with traffic, just because we do anticipate over 100 vehicles dropping off for Monday and Tuesday, and a little bit less for Thursday and Friday. So as you see, we're going to have parents drive in, take a right, move around, and go all the way to where it says stop. I'm not sure that you're able to really see that. Yes, right there with the person, right there. A staff will be positioned there, and just sort of be an opportunity for parents to queue until we're ready for you, which really, that's going to begin 8:05 is going to be parent drop off time. So from 8:05 to 8:30, we want our parents to drop off. And then when we're ready for you, we're going to signal you along the path in the front. We want everybody just to make sure that everyone's going nice and slow, because we do have lots of people on campus. And then the yellow area is the drop off area. Staff will be out. out and ready to receive the children, and we will have them stagger in. So if you can go to the next slide, Scott, I can, there we go. So as I mentioned already, morning drop-off is 8:05 to 8:30. What we are going to have our children do, if they're going to have breakfast, they'll go into the cafeteria. We have it all set up and ready for them. They'll have breakfast. It'll be sort of a grab, a grab and go, but they're going to just sit in the cafeteria and have their breakfast in there, socially distanced, of course. If they don't have breakfast at school, that's totally fine. They'll go directly to their class, to their classroom teachers. We have two separate drop-offs. We have the K-25 entrance, and then we have the preschool entrance. I'm going to go over the K-25 first, and then we'll talk about the preschool. You can go to the next slide, Scott. So we definitely want parents to really do their best to not come to the school too early. If you can, if you do that, it's just going to start to cause a backup. So arrive right, right around 8:05, that would really help us to kind of move things along. Drop-off will end at 8:30, but don't worry. What that means is, is staff has to get inside, get ready for classes, but parents will ask for you to, to park, if that's the case, if you arrive later than 8:30. But during the drop-off time, from 8:05 to 8:30, you remain in your vehicle. You just follow the attendants outside the staff, and have your children be prepared to unload from the driver's side of the vehicle. This part really hasn't changed, but this is, this is important for anyone that's new to drop-off. So we don't want to, students, we don't want students to be unloading anywhere except in that drop-off zone, the designated yellow zone. Once, once you're in the line, no passing, we need everyone to just stay in the line and be patient with us. Buses are coming through also, and buses are going to stay to the left, and then they go to the back of the school. Yield to the buses so that we can get buses up back to where they need to, to drop off in the back. If you choose to park and not wait in the line, that's totally fine, which is that the parents walk their child across the driveway into the main entrance. Parents don't have to come in. Obviously, we want to just have students stagger in and we'll help to manage that. Then for folks that arrive after 8:30, drive to the main entrance. From there, we want you to call the school, just to let them know that you, you've arrived, and we'll come out and greet your child and have them come in. So while this is happening out in the front, the buses are going to be dropping off in the back. So just as a reminder, we want all of our students to be wearing masks on the bus, and this is regardless of their, of their age. In the morning, students will unload from the, from the front to the back. The drivers will work with the staff in the back. We, we have a process where we really like to spend a couple of minutes greeting the students, talking to them, helping them to, you know, just be comfortable and get reacclimated with the process and the procedures. So students will be staggered to the back into, into the school. We'll have sanitized stations. It's the, they're actually on the buses, and we also will have sanitized stations at each courtyard door and in the project area. It's looking like the first couple of days might be inclement weather outdoors, but we'll make sure we have our portable sanitizing stations in a place where the kids can, um, the sanitizer and sanitize their hands and, and go to class or to breakfast. So if we can, if you can go to the next slide, for me, Scott, thank you. So then preschool morning drop-off procedures. So we want preschool parents to drop off their children beginning at 8:30. And we will have the front row available for, for preschool parents to park. So we're not going to, going to have you line up. We're going to have you park and walk your child across to the entrance. Staff will be there and then meet you close by. If you happen to have other children in the vehicle, toddlers, babies, just wave to a staff. They'll come to help you. We want to make this easy for you and to support you, so that you don't leave children unattended in your vehicle. If for some reason you do arrive late, so after 8:45, drive to the main entrance, call the school, and we will come out and greet your preschooler. So then, now we have to move into preschool pickup for the midday. So again, we, we're planning to use Pickup Patrol. We've talked to our parents about this and sent information about Pickup Patrol. Our parents should all have received an invitation email from Pickup Patrol to set up their account. So you would notify us of, of your pickup plan. When you get to the school, you park in the, in the parking area, walk to the entrance, and meet your student there. What we're trying to do, by using Pickup Patrol, is have it be a contactless arrival and dismissal. So then, the person dismissing the student must be authorized to do so, and by filling in the information of Pickup Patrol, you've given us the information of who the authorized adults are to pick up your child. Always have a license or other form of identification with you, with a photo, or we also need to complete a preschool pickup ask. That actually will be required this year. So pickup in the afternoon. This is similarly to what I've just said. The only change here really is that pickup for preschool will begin at 2:45 for the afternoon of preschool. So dismissal. Inside this school dismissal time, for the first couple of weeks, we're going to start it right around 2:15. So keep in mind, we have the dismissal for, for the buses in the back and the dismissal in the front for parents that are picking up. What we're going to use is, again, Pickup Patrol, where parents fill out the information and they notify us as to how their child is going to be going home. What we're going to do with Pickup Patrol is it has a system where if you are picking up your child in your vehicle, you arrive on the campus, Mrs. Foley will see that you've arrived. She'll be out beginning a little after 2:00, and she will notify another staff member through the radio. And we're going to have iPads, which will have the information from parents that is submitted to Pickup Patrol. We'll be able to call for the students that way. The teachers will have set up the Pickup Patrol information on their projector board and see that the parent has arrived, and we'll send the student down. So this is a, while we've used Pickup Patrol for about four years now, this, we've never used this feature of Pickup Patrol. So that's why we're going to start it a little bit early next week for the first few weeks, just to get into the routine. And then at, at the same time that pickup is happening in the front, we're dismissing students in the back through the inner car. So in order to participate in the Car Riders, let's go back again from this conversation. Thank you. We just need everyone to complete the Car Rider application form, and we've had many, many families complete this, so thank you very much. And we have them pretty much ready to distribute next week. We ask that you display the pickup pass that the school issued you. It is yellow this year. And that's when, you'll display that on your window, and when you pull into the school, Mrs. Foley will be able to see it and see your child name and radio to inform the staff inside that you have arrived. So again, you're just going to follow the directions of the staff. Be patient with us as we kind of start this process, since it's been several months since the kids have been in school and that we have had a lot of traffic on campus. So how are we going to handle student tardy and early dismissals? So again, we want parents to use Pickup Patrol to notify us. If you're running late, it's 8:30, and you know you're going to probably get to school at 9:00 to drop off your child, you can notify us through Pickup Patrol. When you get to the school, you call the school, and a staff member will come out to meet your child and get them inside. You won't have to go inside. In terms of early dismissal, again, we want families to use Pickup Patrol. For example, you need to pick up your child at, at 12:30 for a doctor appointment. You can notify us through Pickup Patrol. Even if it's the day of, you can notify us today for a dismissal. But we definitely have to set a, a time where we have to stop taking changes. So the 1:45 PM is the time that we'll stop taking changes with Pickup Patrol. You, you still can call the school if you have an emergency and you need to pick up, or you can still call the school and we'll handle it that way. But once you've arrived at the school, okay, so on arrival, designated adults, you just contact the school, and the, the Mrs. Fergin will call into the classroom, will have your student come out, will take them outside. You don't even have to come inside. We will need you, in some cases, if we don't know you, we will ask for your ID. We know lots of our parents, but in some cases we don't, or if you have someone else picking up your child, we may ask for an ID. All right. And so that's all I have for pickup and drop-off for this year. But student absences, this is something new that the nurses have been working on in the last few days, so I wanted to make sure that I get to this screen. So we're going to need parents to email the school if their child is going to be absent. And so this is the email here, this CES absent. The, the folks that are receiving this email are our nurses, Mrs. Ferkelby and Mrs. Conning. And so they'll receive your email. We ask that you try to include this information here. Your child's name, grade, reason for the absence, and they will contact you and connect with you and just talk about, if, for example, your child is experiencing bluelike symptoms, the line have a conversation with you about that. But this is new. You don't have to call the school. We don't send an email, and this is how we'll, we'll track attendance. They will notify the teacher and the admin assistants in the office so that we can properly mark their attendance. And we will post this, we'll push this out. We'll post it on our Google Sites page, as well as our webpage. And that is all I have.
All right. Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah. Thank you very much, Ruby. Stephanie Clarity for the question?
Stephanie Clarity, thank you, Mrs. Maestis, for the explanation. I have a question. If it happens to be a remote learning day, and say a student has to miss the last two classes of the day, should they email their teacher? Should the parents email the, the office just so they're aware of why the child is not in the remote learning setting?
Yes, Stephanie, that's a good question. If it's a remote learning day and they're going to miss, I, I think what you had said, the last two classes of the day, that we really want you to remain in contact with the teacher, so the teacher knows what's, what's going on. And that's different, being asked on a remote learning day is definitely staff, different from the in-school learning days.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification.
Thank you, Stephanie. Anybody else? Jason, Jason Greenwood?
Hi, Jason Greenwood. Can you just go back over the pickup pass, the process for that, and when parents are going to, like, do parents have pickup passes? Is there a process if there's, can you just go into that a little more detail, please?
Yeah, I will. So we have what's called a Car Rider application form. We just need our parents to fill one out. We sent them out to families a few weeks, a couple of weeks ago. We can make, I believe they're even on our website so that they can be printed out again. So we need parents to fill the, fill out the information to obtain a pickup pass. Once they fill out the form, basically what you're giving us, you're giving us the child information, the grade of the days of the week, because it could be that you only need to, to pick up two days a week, for example, or whatever your situation is. So that's what the form will have a series of questions that you need to just respond to, and then we will issue you a pickup pass.
And are those issued, like, are you mailing them, or are we, are, like, are families going to get them on the first day? Like, how is, how are the families getting the passes, I guess?
You can draw them up off at the school. You can scan them and fax them, or email them to the school. They can be mailed, whatever's the easiest for you.
I think Ruby is clarifying on that question, I think.
Right. No, I'm asking like-
How do the parents end up with the ticket?
Yeah. So how are the parents going to physically get the pass? That, that's the question.
I'm sorry about that. So you will get it on the first day that your student attends in person.
Okay. Thank you.
They will go back home with your, with your student.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much, Jason.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ruby. Anybody else have any questions or concerns? Okay, seeing none. So now we will, thank you, Ruby.
Thanks, Ruby.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted, just one last thing, just bear with us, everyone, on, for the first few weeks, and we just appreciate your patience with this. We know we can get it under a good control. We just want to have some time to work out all of the details and the kinks, if we have any.
Thank you, Ruby.
You're welcome.
Okay. We're going to hear from Mr. Schultz next.
Yep. And Mike, I have, I've elevated you to a panelist, so you should be able to-
And I'm sorry, everybody on Zoom, with the sound issues, we're trying the best we can here, just speaking to the microphones. It's a technical issue.
Give me a second, Mike. I'll pull up your, put you a slide to a slide. Yeah, we can hear you. We can hear you, Mike. Can you hear us?
Yeah. So, good evening, everyone.
Evening.
I, I'm trying to be fairly brief, but as Ruby said, and Mr. Nita said, some of these things that we're doing are brand new, and we will be doing this the first time. We'll take some feedback as we go, and I'm sure we'll be making some adjustments. But just to, my purpose tonight was just to kind of go over some new things in terms of drop-off and pickup, mostly in the mornings and the afternoons, and what expect, what things you can expect as we, as we go through the process on Monday. So a big change for us is that we have moved our bus drop-off to the back of the building. So this first slide is basically demonstrating what it's going to look like on Monday morning. Our students being dropped off, our student drivers and faculty will all be coming in the South Meadow side of the complex. They will head into the main driveway. Our student drivers, so basically we have three different, actually, I guess I would say four things going on here. We've got parents dropping off, we've got student drivers, we've got the bus route, and we have faculty parked. So the student drop-off, so from this first slide, these red arrows will take you through typically to what we've done in the past with the parent drop-off. But in parent drop-off in the past, people would enter this parking area here where they would drop students off. What we're asking people to do now is to drive in, stay to the right, hug the, hug the curb, do not pass anybody, and follow in to where you see these two red lines. And basically, we've designated an area from where the pavement starts on both sides of the concrete walk as a drop-off zone. There'll be cones there. I will be out front with more than likely two to three faculty members. And once you get into the drop-off zone, your child can get out of the car, and our middle school students will head into door one, which is the main entrance, and our high school students will head into door three, which is high school guidance and gym entrance over there. Once you drop your child off, you will then follow the line of cars and out back onto South Meadow. One of the things that's extremely important, again, we've never done it this way, but based on my experience of being in the front of the building hall last year, is people tend to drop off and then have the need to or want to get around the other car and move forward. We're asking that people do not pass anybody in these lanes. So we're going to stay, again, tight to the right side of the road, hug the curb, stay inside the drop zone, and we're asking for patience there. Some, some kids, including my own, we dropped them off at school, can get out really quickly, and some have two, three bags. They're exiting on the right side, the left side of the car. We're going to encourage students to exit on the right side and stay in the curb, but some people drive both their students. So again, your patience and- So again, your patience in waiting behind the car in front of you. And also only dropping into the drop zone. It'll be clearly marked, and you'll know exactly where to go. So we've done a quick bus count for each cohort. And we are anticipating that there will be over each cohort, over probably 100 to 125 students being dropped off. That could mean 120 cars or it could mean 70 cars. We really don't know what that's going to look like until we go through the process. But the key really is to follow the guidelines, follow the directions. We'll be out there and be patient as you drop into the drop zone. We want to stay on parent pickup, and the next slide is parent. If our drop off was deferred, the next one is parent pickup. This one is also very different, because if you have a middle school or high school student in the past, you would have to park typically in what we're calling the student parking. And a lot of times, people would line up their cars in a loop there, or they would park in the visitor spot, waiting for their child to find them. What we're asking you to do now is come in, similar to what you do in the morning. You come in the main road, and there's the red line at the end of the sort of the walkway. That is going to be where we're going to have the first car pulling up to. So the first car will pull all the way up and park there. I would recommend, if you're picking your child up, that you try to go within the window of 2:05, 2 o'clock-ish, get in line, and try to be in that line before, in that timeframe. Same idea, we don't want people passing each other. And I know this is going to be an area where it's going to be very challenging, be patient. But we line up in a long line, we line up to the end of the spot. We'll just line the cars up and see how far they go. And one of the recommendations I had, and it's a suggestion, is once you get into the parking loop, it may make sense, a lot of our middle high school kids have cell phones, it may make sense to just text your child and say, "I'm in the loop. I'm over by the high school gym." Or, "I'm in the loop, and I'm over by the auditorium." Or, "I'm in the loop, and I'm way out almost by South Meadow." Obviously, we don't want kids walking that far, but it gives the kids a sense of where you are. And then, the idea is we don't want kids clustering in front of the buildings. We really want them to get to their car and to move forward in the door. Once we feel like we've got a pretty good sense of the kids in at least the first 60 cars or so, we will release the group to head out back up South Meadow Road and out these South Meadow Road entrances. We are not letting any parents head back behind in the buildings. You would not be able to go with this red line is that it's faculty parking, the bus is looking back there. So that's parent drop off and parent pickup. I don't know if anybody has any questions or wants to clarify anything before we move on to the buses. And I just want to mention, if there's no questions about parent drop off and pickup, I do want to mention student parking. I didn't do a slide for that, it's possible.
Michael-
Our meeting is-
Keep going, keep going.
Is there a question?
Okay, no, go ahead, go ahead, we'll ask it after. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, so, I can't hear though. The parent, the street parking area is on the right side there with Mr. Lee sort of circling. Students will be assigned a parking spot, they'll have a number. And during the parent pickup, at the end of the day, we're not going to open up that red line here, but they're going to be contained in the red line. And they're also going to be contained on the backside where the faculty parking is. And then, once the buses are free, we will probably, more than likely, have the students exit from the backside. Because we don't want to get involved in that chain that is going on with the parent pickup. That's a thought, that may change. But I don't want the interference of the high school kids coming in for the parent pickup line. So we're going to do some serious management there. That's a brand-new system for the high school kids. High school kids used to park in parking spots by the stadium and by the basketball court. And they were able to exit on their own at the end of the school day. This is a change. I talked about it in a presentation to parents with the website, that we are going to stagger our dismissals. So hopefully, the process will be fairly simple in terms of exiting the building. But for the purpose of this meeting, just so people know, we will be dismissing sixth and seventh grade students, always first, to start the school year, see how it goes. They would dismiss to the parent pickup, and they would dismiss to the buses. Then we're going to release our student drivers. Sorry, correction, we're going to release the rest of the building, where they're going. And our student drivers will be released last to basically contain them on the dismissal to make sure there's no crossover. So then we don't want going on at the same time. But we're staggering the dismissals by two to three minutes just to spread out the exit and also spread out, allowing the middle school kids to get evacuated and get into the locations that they need to be. But that should cover student drivers and parent pickup and drop off and pickup.
Mike, I think Jason had a question.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike. Jason Greenwood, my first is, are you also going to have police presence out there, like the elementary school does? Is there a plan for that, in case the cars go out onto South Meadow?
Yeah, I've-
The question was-
Yeah, the question was, are we going to have police presence? And I was going to say that, you know, we have been in contact with the chief, at least for the first few days of school, to have support on South Meadow Road.
All right. My second question is about student drivers. Is there any procedures, guidelines, rules, et cetera, about students picking up friends? People who may not live in the same house? Because I know typically, you know, in a regular year, you know, something, one person would pick up their friends, they'd all come to school. Has that been discussed at all, or is anything like that?
Yeah, that question came up when I did my parent presentation. And we, our recommendation is that you do not drive students, you don't drive students that don't live in the same house. That is my recommendation. I don't know how we're going to enforce that, but if we see that there's a cluster of kids coming in together, we will likely make a phone call and just recommend that. But I don't know how we control that, but that would be our recommendation is that. You would typically drive just your brothers and sisters and people who live in the same house. For the most part, you'd be surprised, there are a lot of students that drive themselves. There are some friends that drive together, but we recommend that they don't do that, and we're going to encourage that. If you see it, we'll continue to do it, so moderate, but hard thing to manage totally.
Thanks.
Anybody else have any questions on Mike's presentation so far? No, okay.
I think we're ready to go to buses.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hold on, Jen Pratt does have a question.
So this isn't specifically on Mike's presentation, but just in general, for school hours for both buildings. So I know on the elementary slide, it said in the beginning, pickup will begin at 2:15, but then we'll go to 2:30 on a regular basis. So in general, for both schools, once we get into a flow, are the school hours the same as they were previously? Or do they have a slightly shortened day because of, you know, the need for staggered entrance and exiting and things like that? Can you just clarify the total hours of the school day for both buildings?
So we have not officially changed the school day for either building. So it's the hour, the same hours that were before, you know. And I think Ruby's just suggesting that people try to get there a little bit earlier. And we're going to try to stagger, stagger people from the outer of the building. At the middle high school, they, I mean, they're going to start the sixth and seventh graders a little bit early, a couple of minutes early. But really, it just might go a little longer. If, you know, if a student used to get out of there at 2:10, they may not get out of there till 2:15. So it just, they might, the students might sit longer in the parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mike, you want to continue with buses?
Yes, Scott, if you can go back a slide, go up a slide, just to the other slide of the buses.
I'm sorry.
So the new layout for the buses, the drop off, you will see that the buses, I believe there are 12 buses in total. We did, this is a dry one, we did over summer. We want to make sure we can fit all the buses. There are some cars back there, but there will be no cars back there. But the idea is that the buses will enter on Pond Street side. We do have these presence there to stop them. Here, the buses will enter Pond Street, and they will loop around. And the building you see to the left is actually the back of the high school gym, where the boys locker room comes out. And where that bus is pulled up to is the greenhouse, there's a greenhouse there. So by pulling up to that spot, we can get all 12 buses in that loop. So we're calling that the bus loop. And in the morning, they would assemble there, and they would wait for us at 7:10 to dismiss to a time. Before we move to the other slide, just, I do want to say that this is the same look that students would come up to at the end of the day. So traditionally, what happens every year is we get a list of the order of the buses, how they park. And then we get a list of every kid on those buses. So on the first day of school, and usually the first couple of weeks, there are staff members out there, we have our bus list, we have our arrangement of the buses. And if students can't find their bus, we direct them and help them and support them. So that information is given to us, that the buses will be assembled by order, the students will come out, they're going to exit the building through multiple doors. I think we've identified four doors in which they can exit. Again, the sixth and seventh graders, definitely for the first couple of weeks, we get that first preference to come out, get set up. Knowing their buses are, get comfortable and find a seat. Again, we really, we really want to make sure that the kids understand not to panic. We have the list, we're going to find a spot, don't worry about it. And then that process would play itself out relatively here. The buses do a really good job of coming in in the order that they've designated. And if for some reason they're not in that order, they let us know. We have radios, we have radio contact with them. And at any point, if I'm missing a student, or if I need to find a bus driver or a bus, we can radio contact them. So a lot of presence, there's a lot of support. Students will come into that loop, they'll find their bus. In this layout, what's happened in the past is the students would stay to the left, and they would walk all the way around looking for their bus. Because we're freezing the buses and no one, there's no traffic back here at all, we're going to have a crosswalk. Basically, at the bottom of the picture here, there's a crosswalk. And as kids come in, they're going to meet you there and we can designate them. So if a kid is technically on bus three, and bus three is the last bus, in the past, we made them walk all the way around because we didn't want them crossing the pathway to get to the tennis courts. And this new layout allows us to get kids to walk to the right, to the left, and nobody moves until we give them the signal. So it's a little more contained and certainly more safer than the worst of the past. And then, if I go back to the morning, this is where the buses will drop off. So we'll be out back, there'll be again four or five staff members. And at 7:10, there'll be a staff member standing where Mr. Martin is in front of that bus there. And there'll be staff members standing at the doors. And there'll be a staff member standing at that first bus by the greenhouse. And we will signal the first two buses to come in, we got the other two buses at a time. Middle school kids would go into the middle school cafeteria down the ramp and into the building that way right to homeroom. The high school kids would head to door 19, which you can't see, it's to the right of 20. They would walk through the cafeteria into their classroom. And each of those entrances, I should say, all of the entrances, there's going to be hand sanitizer, staff standing there in expectation that students sanitize their hands and head directly to homeroom. So other than any questions on that part of it, then I just wanted to mention a couple of quick things.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on that part? Seeing none. Okay, Mike, you're free to go ahead.
And then, the only thing I want to mention is that we have also adopted pickup patrol. It's not something we've ever used before, and ours is not officially set up yet. We are just downloading information off of Aspen. And parents and guardians and families will be getting an email in the next couple of days from Pickup Patrol. And same idea, it will be explained, I don't want to go through it again, but you'll get alerted, it'll set up a com. And there'll be a process in place for dismissals. I would encourage people to check out the website. It is on the carver.org website, it's on the middle school page. I am going to send a message to State Carver Chronicles. We got our first Carver Chronicles going out tomorrow. And we're going to send a message just encouraging parents again to go to that site and help us get the students ready for Monday. Just check, make sure you look at the site. Make sure you go through some of the specific guidelines so that at least the kids know what to expect as they walk through the door. And I would echo, as I started, I'll wrap up the same way, that we are, we are going to go through all of our procedures and protocols on a regular basis. We're going to ask for people's patience. We are going to get through this. And I don't think our staff has ever been this excited to see the students return to school. There's always an excitement for the first day of school, but I think it's a heightened excitement this year to get back to some normalcy. We are ready to roll.
I agree with you, okay. Is that it, Mike?
That was my final pitch, I thought it was a round of applause.
All right, does anybody have any questions or concerns on? Okay, I want to thank you, thank you, Mike, for that very informative presentation. And you know how I could tell that Scott was listening to every word you said and every word Ruby said, was really paying attention? I saw the illustration of everything he was speaking about with the cursor on the display. He was doing a great job following.
I couldn't mark it up, I could have used the, you know, I could have used the pen.
Right.
Can write on the Zoom, as we've seen, sometimes you can write on the-
You need a big laser pointer.
I could have written, but then there wouldn't have been a lot of circles.
Right. Well, thank you very much, Principal Schultz and Principal Maestis, we really appreciate it.
You're welcome, thanks.
Upcoming events.
Okay, so I was actually just excited to add this on to the agenda because we have some upcoming, we have some upcoming events.
Yeah.
So upcoming events was a traditional agenda item where we kind of review what was happening in the schools the next month. You know, obviously, being in our remote scenario and COVID, and we haven't had a lot of upcoming events. But now we have some upcoming events to look at. So obviously, some of the things that happened in September. As we talked about in our last meeting, we're excited that the fall sports season will begin tomorrow. So everybody will begin their practices tomorrow on the 25th. We are going to be doing virtual open houses at the elementary school and the middle high school. So more information will be going to the parents on that. So they'll be via, the open house will be via Zoom. And as I said, the links and more information to come. But September 30th for the elementary school, October 1st for the middle high school. We do have a Teachers' Professional Day on October 9th. It was just originally in the schedule, we didn't, we vamped that at the time. Columbus Day. We're, the SAT exams, I wanted to mention this. SATs historically have not been given during the school day. But they've actually made some changes this year. And they're allowing for the SAT exam to be given during the school day. It was generally given on a Saturday in designated sites. You know, but in terms of the entire goal of, you know, really reducing student contact and not bringing 100 or 200 kids into a building to take the SAT exams, they are allowing school, each individual school to apply for and give the SAT exams to their students. So we have done that, and we will be giving us SAT exams in the building on October 14th. There is an online book fair coming up. And then, as crazy as it sounds, we're also going to be looking at parent-teacher conferences coming up. So as I said, I was just excited to, and the parents, right now, the plan for parent-teacher conferences are also to be virtual, but more information to come on those as well. And as I said, I was just excited to add this back to the agenda in terms of, you know, that we have upcoming events coming, it's great.
Getting back to a little bit of normalcy.
A little bit of normalcy.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about the upcoming events? No, seeing none. Okay, we'll move on to item five, recommendations from the superintendent.
So I'd like-
Mr. Dean, there is a hand up, there is a hand up in the discipline, if you want to address it.
Yeah, we haven't been, we had our time for a public comment.
Okay, I don't think there were questions.
Yeah, so we'll come, we'll come back. We will, generally, I'm not taking questions during the meeting, per se. But if there's something that people want to raise and send me an email about, they certainly can. Or clarify if I made a mistake.
Okay, Superintendent's Goals 2021.
Give me a second.
Yeah.
Give me a second. Came up in a little funny format there. There we go. Okay, so I am in my second year of a two-year self-directed growth plan. Be having my summer evaluation in March. As part of the evaluation process- As part of the evaluation process, I've set annual goals, and we look, so I've established goals for this year. All of my goals this year are really related to COVID and the pandemic and the function of schools, so I'll take you through the three goals, and then take any questions people have, and then look for an approval of these goals as part of my evaluation process. So the first goal, professional practice goal. In order to foster strong relationships with the community, I will work with the administrative leadership team and teachers to effectively communicate with parents and the community throughout the COVID pandemic, as measured by the effective implementation of Aspen, hosting virtual and in-person parent meetings, and a parental survey in terms of communication. Ultimately, the focus here was, I think that we have to have communication with the community during this time, is really, it's always essential, but it's particularly essential at this time because there's so many moving parts, there are so many things that are different, that it made sense for me to say that my professional practice should be always focusing on what can I do best to communicate with the community, and I wanted to make that a focus for this year. If it's okay, I'll go through all three if people are okay with that.
Yeah.
All right. Second one. And just as a little bit of background, as the superintendent, I'm supposed to establish at least one professional practice goal, one district improvement goal, and one student learning goal. District improvement goal, and I referenced this earlier in the meeting. In order to ensure that the district is effectively implementing our three models of instruction, I'll work with the administrative team, teachers, and staff to regularly monitor and assess our progress and to suggest possible revisions for each model as needed, as measured by the completion of an updated and revised district plan for the three models of instruction. So I talked about this earlier, I want to put a team together kind of in each building to assess each model as we implement it, and then make suggestions, revisions, with the goal at the end of the year, you know, kind of updating our reopening plan. And its name will probably change, it won't be the reopening plan anymore because we'll be reopened, but it'll really be a plan based on our three models, three possible models of instruction. And as I said, hopefully, we won't have to be talking about the three models of instruction next summer or next fall, but I also think we have to plan for the reality of, we might have to be looking at those three models of instruction. And then long term, in a totally different light, you know, we could be looking at the three models of instruction, I know there's been a lot of talk about snow days, you know, and will there ever be a snow day again? And would you implement your remote learning plan on snow days? My interesting aside on that in Carver is, I will say, as everyone who lives here knows, that during some of our intense storms in Carver, a good part of the community loses power, so I still think there might still be some snow days in Carver, based on the types of storms we have and and the how frequently, maybe frequent is a strong term, but people, I feel like there's a lot of times during some of our storms, you know, a segment of the town loses power, you know, so that would be a factor in kind of our remote learning. So hopefully, we'll get to a point that that's the only time we're considering using our remote learning plan is on snow days or other emergencies, but you never know. Ultimately, sorry, I digressed there a little bit, but ultimately, the goal really here is to focus on that concept of, you know, really assessing these three models as we implement them and looking to make changes as appropriate, you know, to try to, as I said in the beginning, interconnect that concept of theory versus practice. So we came up with some ideas in theory, now we're putting some of those ideas in practice, and we have to make revisions and adjustments long term. And then the last one, I do want to mention, because I think this, people may jump on the snow day piece, the commissioner has actually said that they don't have official, we don't have official approval yet from the state to say that your remote plan can be implemented as a snow day. They're thinking that that's going to happen, but that actually hasn't been officially approved yet. But I think it'll end up being approved, that if school districts wanted to, they could, you know, implement their remote learning plan instead of a snow day. And then a student learning goal. In order to evaluate possible student regression in reading and math as a result of the pandemic, I'll work with the administrative leadership team and teachers to implement the measures of academic progress, it's known as the MAP assessment, in grades one through eight, to determine students' current level of achievement and to inform teacher instruction as measured by the implementation of the assessment and review of data by teachers and the administrators. The Department of Education is actually asking each district, especially at the elementary level, to do some sort of measure of student progress, some sort of assessment of where students are, has there been a loss for students? Now, obviously, the MAP assessment and the way it's administered for students is typically a fall assessment, a winter assessment, and a spring assessment, and you're supposed to, it's actually, measures of academic progress are supposed to measure growth over time. Now, obviously, giving it for the first time in the fall for our students may, since our students haven't been taking it for years, you know, our measure is really going to be against performance regionally, nationwide, but then over time, we could also use it to measure growth. And the state is saying that they're looking for every district to use some sort of universal screener, and as I said, particularly at your elementary and middle school levels, to say, has there been any kind of loss that's been affected through the pandemic? Now, the MAP assessment was one that we were going to pilot this year anyhow in some grade levels, we were going to do it in one of our teams at the middle school, first and fifth grade there.
Yes, first and fifth.
So it was a measure that we were actually beginning to look at as a district, as something we might do on a wider scale. Meredith actually used it in a previous district, and so, and actually, Mike Myron is using it in a previous district. And so it was assessment that we were looking at anyhow, and since Desi at this time was recommending that each district implement an assessment for students in these grade levels, and we were going to do a pilot in certain grade levels, in our mind, it made sense to expand this pilot, do the assessment for all of our students. The assessment wouldn't happen probably until November, that's the timeline, we want students to be in school, it's not like they're going to come in next week and take the assessment. And so the goal right now is that we get students back in the school, we work with the administrative team of teachers, and we look to implement an assessment in November, and then also do the spring assessment. Desi has actually been working with a lot of these assessment companies, and the MAP assessment is actually free for districts in the fall, and then there's a charge per student in the spring. And we're going to be able to cover, basically, what we were going to spend on the pilot this year is going to, we'll be able to do the spring assessment as well, and then make a determination if this is something we'd want to use long term. But ultimately, the goal really is to meet that recommendation, something that we should be doing to say, has there been an effect for our students in terms of, you know, some of the, some of the loss that's happened in terms of curriculum and instruction in our remote model? So that, those are the three goals, as I said, they're all kind of tied back or in some way related to the pandemic and to, you know, our ever-changing situation in the pandemic. And I guess at this time, I would take any questions or a, and obviously, I'm making the recommendation that these be approved as my goals for this year.
Accepting your goals. Okay, does anybody have a question? Seeing a hand up, Jason Greenwood.
Jason Greenwood. Thanks, Scott, this, I like these a lot. My question is on the student learning goal, and I feel like we had this conversation last year too, and we'll have this conversation again next year and over and over again. Anyway, with the student learning goal, did you consider maybe, because I see in the action plan, you're giving the fall assessment, you're giving the spring assessment, so did you consider using the growth in between those two assessments, and then the language that's in your goal as an action step? I almost see it as flipped. Do you understand what I'm saying? Like, I almost, I almost see like the progress as the goal, and the action step is using the initial data to inform teacher instruction as a step? Or am I way off here?
Sorry, can you just say it again?
So, Jason, excuse me, just get right in the mic, Jason, please.
Get what?
Just get right into the mic.
Yeah, all right.
There you go, thank you. And that's, I was just, I'm just trying to process your question.
No, I'm going to do this too.
Thank you.
So student learning goal, did you, or did you consider it being an actual quantitative goal?
Goal of growth of students.
Yes, and then, so, because I see the action steps would be the fall assessment, the spring assessment, would, would you consider the goal being, you know, how much, I guess, less regression was there in this case? And then the action step, like everything from the second line to implement all that, would be the action step to meet that goal? Was that a consideration at all or anything like that?
It was not in the specific goal, but it certainly could be, it could be revised to meet that standard, if that's the recommendation. I understand what you're saying perfectly, it goes back to the whole concept of, we, I think we did have this discussion last year.
Yeah.
The goal, the goal last year was a little different though, because it was much more about social emotional learning, this is much more tied to student growth.
Yes.
But it doesn't have a quantitative measure of, the language that sometimes likes to be used in our district is, students will show an upward trend. In essence, the students are going to show a growth measure, a five percent growth, a 10 percent growth.
Right.
A 15 percent growth.
So I mean, just the.
The interesting part is, I was, I wanted to address this because I, my original goal when we were coming, well, my original goal in the spring, before all of this happened, was I was going to have a very targeted goal on growth for MCAS scores. But obviously, we didn't give the MCAS this past year, I'm not sure what's happening with MCAS this year.
Right.
So I'm not making a statement that MCAS is not happening because no one has said that.
No, exactly.
Actually, the lang, actually, what we're being told is that MCAS is happening, but I'm not sure if it's going to.
That's a whole separate.
Right, that's a whole separate discussion. I'm not making a statement on whether MCAS is or is not happening.
Correct.
But I said, I can't, I clearly can't make a goal around MCAS because I don't know if MCAS is happening.
I agree with you on that, yes.
So then I was saying, well, what can I do that would actually be tied back to student growth, student learning? And I take your concern, I can revise this goal to put a measure in.
Right, so I mean, just when I think about the goal, it's, all right, we administered the MAP and we informed teachers of the instruction.
Right.
That's, that's the goal. So it's just like, could, could, could we go a little farther with that? That's, that's what I was.
Yep.
Everything else I love, it's wonderful, it's just, I'm a stickler for student learning goals, I apologize.
Yeah, it's hard as the, it's interesting, I think it's an interesting perspective as a, as the superintendent.
Right.
Obviously, I have a lot of control, but not a lot of control.
Yeah.
You know, in terms of, ultimately, my impact should be, students should be learning, and I should demonstrate that students are showing growth.
True. All right, I'm good, thanks.
Anybody else have any questions or comments, concerns? James O'Brien.
Scott, I wasn't totally clear on hearing Jason about their half, so I hope not to be redundant with this, but clearly, your goal is directly related to teachers' production in goals. The timeframes are different from that, has there been a negotiated change of that? If you're talking about this testing not occurring until November, like what are they going to base their goals on if they're not getting that data till later in the year?
Teachers' goals can be tied back to the district's goals. So teachers will tie their goals back to the educational blueprint and the objectives in the educational blueprint. And then the other piece of that, James, is we are also establishing, well, one of the things that has been tentatively agreed to is that we're going to readjust the timelines for the evaluation process for the teachers. We haven't done that yet, actually, the first meeting of that group's going to meet next week and talk about readjusting the timeline based on a later start. So the timeline for teachers to develop their goals will be later. And, but ultimately, the teachers' goals don't necessarily have to tie back specifically to my goals, they need to tie back to the district's improvement plan or the educational blueprint, which I think they would be able to do.
But as do you, they need, they need a matrix for data, for a student goal.
Yeah, but they can, some of our teachers do it very specifically, not all of our teachers tie their student learning goal back to MCAS exams, or to a MAP assessment, or to the DIBELS, some tie them back to very specific assessments they give in their own classrooms. So I don't feel like giving this assessment in November diminishes teachers' abilities to establish goals.
Okay, anybody else?
I have a point of parliamentary procedure, I guess.
Okay, Jason, go ahead.
Can we vote on these goals separately?
Well, we could, as long as you structure the motion that way.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sorry, I missed, you both talked at the same time, and I didn't pass on the single.
We can do that, as long as you structure the motion that way.
Oh, okay, that's fine, thank you.
I said the same thing, that was not supposed to, we said the same thing at the same time.
So we want to, want to make a motion to do that, or do we?
I'll make a motion to approve the professional practice goal.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote, we'll start with Stephanie.
Stephanie Clarity, aye. Jennifer Pratt, aye.
Jason Greenwood, aye.
James O'Brien, aye.
Andy Cottrelli, aye, it's unanimous. Okay, we need a motion for the.
Move to approve the district improvement goal.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this? Motion. Seeing none, Stephanie.
Stephanie Clarity, aye. Jennifer Pratt, aye.
Jason Greenwood, aye.
James O'Brien, aye.
Andy Cottrelli, aye, it's unanimous, it passes. Thank you.
So I can make a recommendation to table the student learning goal, you can, you can vote it out if you, as well, where we can make a motion, someone can, if I make a recommendation to table the student learning goal, and I will return in our next meeting with a rewritten student learning goal.
I was honestly going to wait to see what someone else was going to do, to be honest with you, so.
Well, does anybody want to make a motion to accept the student learning goal? What's up to you? I'm asking the membership if you want to make a motion to accept.
That there was, you want to see it adjusted to reflect what you spoke about, right?
That's just, that's just my opinion, so Stephanie asked if I wanted to see it adjusted to what I said, that's just my, my one opinion, so I'm just one of five here, so I just, I just wanted to put my perspective out there.
I agree.
And that was that, so.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to table the student learning goal until our next meeting. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table the student learning goal until our next meeting. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Stephanie Clarity, aye. Jennifer Pratt, aye.
Jason Greenwood, aye.
James O'Brien, aye.
Andy Cottrelli, aye. Okay, thank you, everybody, it's.
All right. So I'll come back in our next meeting with those two later.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay, now we go to reports from the school committee.
No.
What?
We have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead here, sorry. We, okay, I missed that one. So we're going to, I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong thing. Let me find my place here. Reaffirmation of school committee protocols.
Okay, so a few years ago, the school committee, as part of a training with the mass association of school committees, developed and approved these protocols. You know, we've generally reviewed these at the beginning of each school year, though I will say we did not do that last year, that's the last time we reviewed them was a couple of years ago. And ultimately, the school committee has faced a lot of challenges this year, and I think it might be beneficial to come back and take a look at these, each of these protocols, and, you know, we could, people can make a motion to revise them, we could adopt them as they are, but I thought it might be good to just kind of read through them, if everybody's okay, so I'll read through the protocols, then we'll have this chair, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, that's fine by me, everyone all right with that? Everyone's all set?
Carver School Committee Protocols. For the purpose of enhancing teamwork among members of the school committee and between our school committee and the administration, we, the members of the Carver School Committee, do hereby commit ourselves to the following operating protocols. Number one, the school committee will represent the needs and interests of all children in the district. Number two, the school committee will help establish the vision, create policies, and assure accountability. The superintendent will manage the schools and the staff. Number three, the school committee will consider best practice, public input, and financial impacts in making their decisions, sorry, in their decision-making. Number four, when executive sessions are held, school committee members will honor the confidentiality of decisions. Number five, the school committee and superintendent will facilitate goal-setting for the district. Number six, the school committee members recognize the single official voice of the board. Number seven, the school committee will work towards continuous improvement in teaching and learning by clearly defining district goals, developing policies, and promoting achievement of all students. Number eight, the school committee recognizes the importance of working collaboratively with town officials to improve our school. Number nine, the school committee will conduct its business through a set agenda, emerging items will be addressed in subsequent. items will be addressed in subsequent meetings through agenda items. Number ten, the school committee will channel request for information through the superintendent of schools, sorry, through the superintendent and the school committee chair rather than directly to staff. The superintendent will ensure that each member has equal access to information. Number eleven, school committee members will work together to clarify and restate discussions in order to strive for full understanding. Number twelve, the school committee will base our decisions on facts, vote our convictions, avoid bias, and uphold and support decisions of the majority of the committee once is made. Number thirteen, the school committee will maintain trust and mutual respect between among committee members, the superintendent, and the administration by treating everyone with dignity and respect even in times of disagreement.
Thank you, Scott. Anybody like to go on further with this, or questions or concerns? Jason?
I do, Jason Greenwood here. There are three on here that I'd like to highlight based on the past few months. It's been crazy just what we've had to go through as a committee. We all know this, right? It's, there's a lot of personal feelings with the virus and the closing and all these things. Number six and number 12 kind of go hand in hand to me. Number six is recognize the single voice of the board, number 12, base our decisions on facts, vote our convictions, avoid bias, uphold and support the majority of the committee. And I know it's difficult to do that, and this is, you know, during meetings, online, in public, talking to people, it's, I know it's hard, and I just, I think it's good to have this reminder that, you know, if we vote on something, it's our vote and we all own it. And what I've been finding is I've had to justify when personal opinions from committee members are happening in public, I have to remind people that their personal comments are personal opinions that aren't reflective of the committee. And to be honest, it's exhausting to continually have to say, this is a personal opinion versus what the committee said, because what we say is in the minutes and what we decide upon. So, and I think some of that may have gotten lost with just the high tension just of the topics that we talk about in general, with the hundreds of people we've had on Zoom, with all the emails we have, it's, you know what I mean? So I think that's, that's something very important to consider and to remember. And the other thing, the other one I want to highlight is number 10, which is the school committee will channel requests through information through a superintendent and the chair rather than directly. It's more the second piece, that we ensure that, and this isn't, I think if we have to adjust something, it would be the superintendent and committee members ensure that each member has access, equal access to information. Because when we're coming to meetings and we say, well, I've heard from these 15 parents or these eight people about, you know, we tried very hard to share communications, make sure we're all on the same page, but there was a lot of things, a lot of new information heard here that was not shared with everyone, you know what I mean? And it's tough, and whether it's through our Carver email, but whether you get things through social media or in person, like if there's those important opinions, we need to make sure that we're all kind of on the same page getting that. So I think just reaffirming those, and again, I know it's tough, this is not a comfortable topic to even bring up or talk about, but it's important, and with that, I will stop.
Thank you, Jason. Is, would anybody else have a comment or concern on this, or want to discuss something on it? Can you write? Go right ahead, Stephanie Clarity.
Stephanie Clarity, I just want to say that I echo Jason's statements. I know this has been a very trying time, and I know that we're being communicated at from people in a lot of different methods, and I think it's important for us as a committee to stay on the same page. So I just wanted to say thank you for bringing this up, and I think it's a good reminder for everyone, for us here, and then others also who are watching, who are at home, so they have a clearer picture as to, a little bit more about what our roles are defined as, and what the protocols are around being a school committee member, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Stephanie. Anyone else? Okay, I agree that this is an important topic, I mean, I think getting involved in social media, I mean, I've done it, and, you know, you try to, people ask you questions and you want to have an answer, but sometimes what you're saying sometimes isn't the right thing, or it might not be reflective of everybody in the board. So that's why I've stepped back during all this on social media, and I've been trying to refer things back to Superintendent Neef, you know, for questions and things like that. I get texts from people, and people that know me in town, they have questions, I try, I just say, you know what, this is not, I, you know, it's not really appropriate for me, I try to refer them to Mr. Neef. If I, you know, if I know something in general topic, you know, that's already been discussed, already been voted, something like that, just an informational piece, that's fine, you know, but I agree with you, Jason, that it can be overwhelming dealing with, especially during this time when COVID was happening, you know what I mean, when everybody was asking you questions, you know? So that's just one of the reasons why I stepped back myself, you know? But on the other, on the other, not other hand, but just on the, on the other side of the, I guess the other hand. Everybody, I mean, people have heard me talk, you know, everybody has their own freedom of speech and First Amendment rights, and I'm an advocate of that, but I also think it's, it's wise to go back to, and I forgot which number it was, having the school committee have a sole voice.
Number six.
Number six, yes. So, I mean, just in saying that, it's best to go back to my previous comments and just say, you know what, if you're getting questions, you know, either say, you know, I'll get back to you, or I'll refer to Administrator Neef and, Superintendent Neef, sorry Scott, Superintendent Neef, and someone will get back to you on it, you know? So, anyway, thank you for bringing this up, Jason. I think it's important to remind ourselves of these things as well. All right.
So I don't know if the committee wants to make a motion to reaffirm these protocols, or that's ultimately the will of the committee?
Okay, Jase, James?
Second.
Okay, James made a motion and Jason seconded, okay. Okay, any further discussion on this? Reaffirmation, okay, roll call vote.
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Jennifer Pratt, aye.
Jason Greenwood, aye.
James O'Brien, aye.
Andy Cottrelli, aye. All right, the reaffirmation is approved. Thank you, everybody. All right, now, if I'm not mistaken, now reports on the school committee. All right, it wouldn't be a meeting without me missing something on my agenda here. Anybody like to say a few words?
I would mind starting out real quick, if you don't mind.
Okay, James O'Brien.
I would just like to wish the teachers and the students all a great start in their, in their actual hybrid learning, and hope everybody's excited to get back in school and hope things go smoothly as they can.
Thank you, James. Anybody else? Jen? Jen Pratt?
Jen Pratt, I just want to, again, commend all of the teachers and staff for the first eight days of school in full remote. There were certainly challenges, but everybody worked really well together as a team. A lot of the feedback that I've heard from people is similar to what Scott shared earlier, that, you know, while there were challenges and difficulties, everybody really appreciated their teachers. If I could share one thing, it would be, there's never too much communication. I think the one consistent complaint is that people still feel like they're not hearing enough about what schedules might be or plans are, so if I can kind of send out a broad message, it would be, there can never be too much communication, so the more, the better right now as we transition to hybrid. My family is very excited to see buses rolling next week, my kids are very excited to go to school, and so teachers and staff, we thank you for everything you're doing to prepare for those kids that will be entering the buildings, for the teachers that are going to be teaching the kids that are staying remote, we thank you for all that you're doing, and we wish continued success for that remote student population. And, you know, encourage, you know, anybody if they're feeling like they need something to reach out to administration, that they are there to help, and so, as a school committee member, I just thank everybody for their continued efforts, it is greatly appreciated and it is noticed.
Thank you, Jen. All right, Stephanie, okay, Stephanie Clarity.
Stephanie Clarity, I want to echo everyone's sentiments in wishing everyone who will be coming back to the buildings next week and those on the remote learning platform to have a successful start to the year. I also wanted to take the time to thank teachers, administrators, staff, Mr. Neef, really everyone for all of their efforts that they've put in over the past months. This is a year that none of us could have anticipated it with the way that it looks, but I know that if everyone practices a little bit of extra patience and keeps up that communication, that we will work together as a community, as a school district, to make it the best year that it possibly can be for everyone. So I want to say thank you to students and parents for your patience, thank you for all of your efforts during the remote learning days that we've just had. I know there have been some challenges, but there's also been some great feedback, I know that it's greatly improved from what we had in the spring, and it will only improve going forward. I also wanted to remind folks that the buses will be rolling on Monday, and for people to please practice some patience if you're behind a bus, to please not pass it. I know it will take a few more minutes, but we need to make sure that everyone stays safe. So I hope everyone has a great first day in the hybrid model on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, seeing no others, okay. Seeing no others, I too would like to wish everybody a happy reopening to a hybrid model and getting back to some normalcy as I mentioned before. I'm sure it'll, it'll feel good for everybody just to see those, the kids walk through the doors again. And I'm going to be short and sweet tonight and say thank you, everybody, for watching our, our meeting, thank you for Area 58, for, and Will for taping this and getting it on the air, and we couldn't go live tonight unfortunately, but it will be on Area 58 and up on the YouTube page, I'm sure, as soon as they can get it up there. And I'm sure the audio will be much better on the, watch it, watch it on YouTube or on Area 58. And with that, I would take a motion.
I move to adjourn and not to.
No, don't even.
Stephanie Clarity, I just, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, this is a roll call vote.
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Jennifer Pratt, aye.
Jason Greenwood, aye.
James O'Brien, aye.
Andy Cottrelli, aye, it's unanimous, we're adjourned at, what time is it? 8:44. All right, thank you, everybody, and have a great night.
Thank you.